It's six fifteen and I'm gonna open this open session meeting of the air planning board for March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. First item is the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Do I have a discussion on the agenda? Any comments?
I, can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Please.
My understanding is some of these, um, we're just gonna open and continue, but we don't have to change the agenda for.
I don't think we do.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe so.
I have not been able to keep up with the emails over the last day or two, so.
That's, that's cool.
The informational emails, thank you.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Agenda is approved. Uh, I don't believe we have any covenant bond releases today?
No.
So the first item is Nasoya Foods, so I don't believe there's any representative applicant. Could you tell, just remind everyone what the story was at Nasoya?
Uh, yes, I received a, both a phone call and an email from Attorney Gibbons, who represents Nasoya, indicating that they needed a little bit more time to address especially the DPW, the revised comments from DPW, and that he requested a continuation to the April eleventh meeting in order to have discussion of this. So, uh, Planning Board should make a motion to continue the site plan special permit and stormwater permit hearings.
Okay. Uh, should we open it? Open it?
Oh, yeah.
To move to continue and close it down?
Can we do it all in one motion?
I believe so, yeah, as long as it's clear.
Yeah, just said you gotta, just to cover the three things for us? Okay.
Okay. Um, so may I, may I move that we continue the site plan special permit, aquifer overlay district and stormwater permit hearings for Nasoya Foods USA, one New England way for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements? So I move that we open that. Secondly, I move, at the request of the, um, applicant, and it's also my understanding the applicant has given us a letter, extent, a letter of extension?
Mm-hmm.
That we continue to the next air planning board meeting, the continued site plan special permit and stormwater permit hearings for Nasoya Foods USA.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes ayes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next, if, if Cal and, and Mr. Gallagher would like to step up, we'll talk about fourteen Washington. I'm gonna ask the town planner, Mark, to just, uh, bring us up to date. Where are we with this, what's on the table tonight?
Do we need to open this?
I believe we do.
I could have a motion.
I'd like to move to open the site plan and special permit hearing for Seal Harbor Companies, central fire station fourteen Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into five residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space and a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Just the clarification, we're opening this, but as a continuation from a previous meeting, it's not the first.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're continuing this, I appreciate that, and I'll take that as a friendly amount, as a friendly suggestion.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is now open, so I'm gonna let Marco first, just bring us to where we are, and then we can proceed.
Okay, um, as most everybody here knows, uh, the building commissioner issued a letter to the applicant and, uh, GPR stating that in his, uh, opinion as the zoning enforcement officer, that only one unit was allowed on the ground floor without seeking a variance, and it's my understanding that the, the applicant is in, in agreement with that, and that, uh, you know, they acknowledge that will require plan amendments, uh, so that's all I know as of, as of right now, and, uh, I'm sure you'll be walking us through it. Just let me know which file you would like opened here.
Ah, okay.
Both, one or two.
Seal Harbor, yeah.
The first one?
Yeah, try that one.
So we're looking at?
That's the one.
A revised set of plans tonight? Is that the other?
No. So we just received.
Oh, okay.
So let me speak to it.
Please.
If I could. So we, um, late last week, I believe, was one.
For the record, will you introduce yourself?
My name is Mark Gallagher from Seal Harbor Companies.
Thank you.
So, uh, late last week, we received the letter from Charlie, uh, the building inspector, indicating that he opined on the use of, and, um, although we may not agree with him, I think at this point it would, it would be very time-consuming, expensive to take a trip to the ZBA, um, on the fifth unit, um, so we made a business decision to avoid that, um, and just to accept his letter. So, um, I notified Mark, uh, earlier, well, I should say over the weekend, I believe, that this would be the course that we would take, um, and tonight is Tuesday night, so we, we would not have had a chance. I, I did speak to the, I spoke to the architect, um, we have a revised floor plan that's coming together and should be available early, you know, later this week. We have to work on that right-hand side if, if you look at the building now, so, well, I think when we were in front of you, there was some conversation, discussion, and I've gone through so many discussions on this, not with you, but with others, that there was a desire to remove the wing on the left-hand side, and, um, also.
Here, so.
That'd be awesome.
Top of that.
And there was, obviously, there was some discussion about the wing on the right-hand side was not in concert with the, the vernacular of the original building. So we're going to propose raising the right wing as well as the left wing. The left wing's already taken care of by virtue of the, the building to the rear, and then, uh, one of the other comments when we were here, maybe two weeks ago, a month ago, was that we're right up against that, that, that right-hand side sits right on the lot line.
Yeah.
So we're gonna pull it in a couple of feet so that we can have some travel space on that side, um, and we're trying to think of a way that we can introduce a, a tower, a little bit of a tower in the front, that would be in keeping with what was the original design of the building, to try to balance the symmetry of what we have on the left-hand side, and, um, leave the front of the building, because the front is brick, although it's a Butler Building behind it. Remove the Butler Building, leave the front, and then build upon it, so that we can meet a few things. We can get off the lot line, have at least a walkable space down the, the right-hand side of the building to the back, get some type of an architectural element that will be attractive and balance the building symmetrically.
Okay.
And, um, just have the, you know, commercial use on that, on that rate. It's about, reduced, it's about seven hundred and eighty-six feet, um, so it's, it's not a large space.
Okay.
But I think we can blend it in nicely. It also speaks to our parking waiver that we needed, 'cause we'll be reducing the parking requests by a couple of spaces, um, and that's really, you know, my best run of the left to manage.
This is a question for both the applicant and for the town planner, but what can we get done tonight? Is this just to see, just up where we are today?
Right, yeah, yeah, just to see where we are and if the planning board is amenable to this modif- modification. Under the current application, they're going down one unit, right?
Correct.
So that's a lesser end of intensity.
If I, if I may, um, we said you, this is not a revised plan, it's not revised according to the latest plan.
This is the original, well, the revised of the original.
But this is a revision from the first plan that we went through with you.
Correct, yeah, we saw this one.
There's, there's several things that we've done, and I could point out fairly quickly for you on this, that, uh, we could do tonight, and what we may also wanna do tonight is to, uh, to just talk about the special permits that we've asked for.
Yep.
I think it'd be worth going through those, the, the logic of those, just so we can get straight what it is we're asking for and why.
Later, too, if, if I may, I think it'd be good, because of the, you know, when you talk right hand, left hand, I'm not sure if you're talking, looking out from the building, looking into the buil- we can cover, we can look at the elevation later.
Can I actually make a suggestion?
Not in self.
Uphill, downhill.
Not in self.
The right side is the upper side, the left side's the downhill side.
Yeah, no problem.
Fair enough?
Yep.
No, I don't know where the, oh, I guess I kinda, no, I live more than.
We got a north arrow on there, we can do north and south.
We can do north, south, too. Yep, okay.
Well, that's.
Just for our conversation.
That's how you look at the building today.
Yeah.
Downhill side, your left-hand side, your uphill side, your right-hand side.
Yeah, we're looking west, we're looking.
That's exactly, if we were on the street.
Yeah.
If we were on the street, you'd be looking at the building just like that.
Exactly. Okay, but go ahead.
Okay, so we talked, last time we had three parking spaces here, we had three parking spaces here, um, and we said we would potentially add a parking space here if we needed, uh, to make it a, a handicap space, which is not a requirement at this point, but if we have a tenant that says, "I want handicap parking," then it becomes a requirement. So we actu- and, and your suggestion to us is, "Well, then show us all four spaces." That's what we've done, one, two, three, and four, with a four-foot walkway in between, so they can get to the sidewalk from the building. We've also added a walkway across the front of the building here, ostensibly that was for this, people in this unit to be able to walk across, to get over here to the mailbox and laundry room, which is right here. Mailboxes are inside here, laundry is here. There's a trash enclosure screen right there that we've added. We expanded this trash enclosure a little bit, showed it here, removed the bike rack over to this area, which I think we talked about doing, and that allowed us to expand this planted area here, as well as showing a planted area here and a planted area here. Uh, this is a grass, so planted means landscaping.
Yep.
And we've shown some, uh, potential landscape plantings here, uh, we're not the landscape architect on the thing, so we didn't give you a, a detailed plan of landscaping, but those are the plants that we would anticipate using.
So, Cal, I just have a question, I'm trying, I try not to touch the screen, but for, so this bump out for the fire hydrant?
Yep.
Is it walk around it, or are you moving the?
Walk, no, you walk around it. That's, that's a raised brick enclosure for the fire hydrant that we thought, unless you tell me differently, we thought that that was being retained for the.
Right.
Character of the building.
Somebody came to the building in the last two weeks and said they, and I thought it was a town person, said that they didn't want it removed, that that was important to the building and it was not to be touched.
Which.
They saw my guys, I wasn't there.
And that, that was our intent.
There's a lot of repair, you know it needs repair, obviously, it's falling apart.
Yeah, they haven't said much of anything, yeah.
They, so.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying that whoever came, I don't know if it was from the fire department or who came.
Yeah.
But they said that they, that was part of the agreement, was to keep that fire hydrant enclosed in brick.
Uh, check your deed and whatnot, you know?
No, I.
Who that person was, who said that.
So I know we had a communication from the DPW where they were anticipating that this would be removed, and our response to them was nowhere, our intention is to keep it. I think they said it was theirs and to be returned to them, so I guess it's because it was a fire hydrant tying into their water system, is my assumption.
Yeah.
But if we're leaving it where it is, then it stays where it is. Uh, so this, this was to give a, the ability to traverse across the front of the building and also allow access from these parking spaces to different portals in the building without having to go out to the sidewalk and walk behind the cars. And, uh, Mr. Discan had requested that we, uh, outline this area, parking, to make sure that this grass area, which is snow storage, also in front of these doors, to make su- uh, sure that people don't park there, drive onto them. Uh, we've actually done it two ways, we've shown either cobbles or some kind of border, landscape border around here, but then also this sidewalk, here, the sidewalk is at grade with these parking spaces, also with the, and this curbing has to be reset if it's, if it's higher, so that they can drive over at street level, same with down here, uh, but in this area, there's a ramp up to a, a six-inch reveal granite curb across the front and a ramp back down. So if you're on the sidewalk, you can traverse that, but it will prevent people from driving up on the grass or getting over the cobble, so we're responsive to that request. Um, we've also shown, if you notice, a, an increased landscape area here, I think that was a very nice suggestion made, um, it obviously still requires the, the consent of Calvin Moore, who owns that property, but we're hopeful that we can get that. Um, and then this sidewalk will be replaced with, uh, concrete all along the front of the building.
Okay.
Um, those are the changes that we've made to this plan, as I said, it's not, not extensive, wouldn't take a long time to go through them, but those are the ones that, that we made that were in response to previous comments by the board. And then, uh, if you wanna move into the special permits, if there's any, if you have any questions.
Let me just check my colleagues, you have any questions before we move on to the special permit? Please go ahead.
So, uh, special permit request, so Mark, we've got a, I wanted to address one thing. So this is a revised set of plans.
Right.
It's site plan review application, site layout landscaping, we're using this for the special permit application as well as the site plan, so this, this is the one set that will cover both of those, I mean, so I might get that on the record. Uh, so the first special permit was kind of a, an interesting conundrum, because your bylaw is very specific, so if you have a multifamily dwelling, you wanna convert it to a mixed-use building, that's not a special permit. You wanna convert it to a, to a, uh, non-residential building in this zone, that's not a special permit. So there's things you can do without special permits, but it very specifically says if you're gonna take a non-residential or a mixed-use building and convert it to a multifamily, which I interpret to mean solely a multifamily building, then you need a special permit. However, um, your bylaw, that's not what we're doing. What we're doing is we're converting a non-residential building to a mixed-use building.
That's right.
Which in your bylaw does not require a special permit. However, your, your zoning enforcement, right, Mark? So your zoning enforcement officer.
Mm-hmm.
Opined that, he just made a broad statement that whatever the more restrictive requirement is, is what we have to do, which I haven't seen zoning tables interpreted that way before, usually it's pretty specific, if it says it's required, it's required, if it doesn't say it's required, it's not required. However, that was his opinion and he's made it, and we're kinda stuck with it.
Well, I know it is somewhat confusing, and I, it's, this is on the agenda for the planning board to amend a little bit, but.
To discuss.
You know, but to discuss, anyway, but, um, you know, back in, back two years ago, when you were seeking the, you know, the original approval, this, you know, table existed then, and you were seeking a special permit from the ZBA at that time.
That was because.
Before the Form Base Code went out.
That was because we had, there was a special permit requirement to have, um, residential.
Completely residential, complete residential, no mixed-use.
Yeah, it was a, it was a different special, it was not the same special.
Different special permit.
There was, Mr. Gallagher, Seal Harbor hadn't planned to use it as an office space at that time.
Yeah.
It was just gonna be living space.
I've got that.
Six units of living space, I believe.
Right, okay.
Prior to your.
Hundred percent correct.
Being evolved, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the downstairs that required.
What does the planning board think?
So let me, I know.
Yeah.
I, I saw, I saw Ken and Nathan, so if, oh, no? Okay, so let's, Ken.
Okay, so, we're on the right track here, um, the problem is that we do not actually have a place in the table that says conversion from a commercial building to a mixed-use building, which is what we have. So your application is for a mixed-use building, we don't have that here anywhere, so we're trying to get a, I wanna say some kind of a hybrid almost out of this, is what we're doing, because we don't have, in specific language, it says, conversion of a non-residential to a mixed-use building. We have, as you pointed out, conversion of a non-residential or a mixed-use to a multifamily, which is what you were doing before.
Right.
So we do have a conundrum here, just in our own language, is what I'm getting at, okay? I don't think that is something we cannot overcome, we can overcome it, I believe.
So, we are the authority for the special permit on, in this case, right?
Correct.
So let me, hyp- speaking hypothetically, if we were inclined and in favor of it, that might be the fastest way through this, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, most certainly that's the fastest way through it, and you're.
If, I can't assume, but if, right.
And, and I would point out that your building inspector disagreed with us that you are the authority, that he is the zoning enforcement officer, and it was his determination, so I don't think there's any easy way around that other than.
I see what you're saying.
To just do the special permit. I mean, that's, and we're not objecting to that at this point, I just, Mr. Discan's got it right.
You might have misunderstood his, I've got his letter right here. Um, I think he points out the difference, um, and whatnot, but in the end of the day... Second, I just, did you mean a statement, special permit discretion, planning law?
Yes, and my read of that.
Basically says, "I agree that it's not clearly defined in the zoning bylaw," but then he uses that, what you said, the, the standard of the most stringent application to the.
Just kind of a catch-all.
Most restrictive, high-end standard shall govern, and therefore project requires a special permit. It says, but it says that the, section one-five, which is the other law's section, "The most restrictive and, or the one imposing the highest standard shall govern, therefore this project requires a special permit by the authority having jurisdiction." Well, if that's us, then.
That's us.
We don't agree, but we're not gonna argue with it either.
No, but he's, why wouldn't you agree that he's, that we, that it requires a special permit by the authority having jurisdiction? If we're the.
I think it does. Oh, it does, I mean, it does because the building, the zoning enforcement officer has opined that, and unless we wanna appeal that, which we don't.
Right.
Then it does, and you are the special permit granting authority, quite honestly, so we don't have any objection to moving ahead like that. And you're right, it's the quickest way to do it at this point.
Now I got it. Reading, unfortunately, reading again will not help me, so it's, I'm a little dense on this. Okay.
So that's our first one anyways, um.
But I, I think you're looking for a temperature check on that one from us, to say where we are, is?
Well, I mean, always happy to get a.
Or even a vote tonight.
I'm sorry?
Which seems unlike, or a finding, for the special.
Uh, what if, yeah, the planning board could make, in fact, that might be good legally is, you know, to make a finding as to whether you believe a special permit, uh, per section one-point-five is needed.
Not needed, just a rule.
Why can't we just vote?
Or is applicable.
Or, you know, at this point, I think that the fastest way around the controversy is say, "Fine, it requires a special permit, you have it," you know, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, but you shouldn't grant the special permit tonight.
No.
No, no, okay.
No, what I wanted to know, what I wanted to give the applicant a sense of, I think it's fair to just give them a sense of where we're going.
Correct.
And my sense is that, that, that doesn't seem to be an obstacle at this point, unless someone thinks otherwise. Okay, good, that's my point, all right. Next special.
Okay, wait, so, did we go around the table, or how are we gonna approach this? Because clearly what we do, right, at this particular moment, is gonna be in disagreement with zoning enforcement officer.
Uh, no, if the, if the planning board agrees to require a special permit, that would be in agreement.
With the first part.
Yeah.
With, yeah.
My, my read of it is, if we declare that we are the granting authority, I think the second part of the letter, and you can look at it again, Mr. Discan, you have it in front of you, states that that becomes the, um, answer. I know, it's a, it's an interesting conundrum, it really is.
We're not gonna rule on it tonight, we're not gonna rule on the findings.
Well, it doesn't help anybody if we don't do something.
No, but I think that.
If we, if we, we need, we either have to tell them they need to go to the zoning board of appeals, I think, or we have to tell them that we're gonna issue a special permit. There's no, there's no two ways around it, is it?
I agree with what you're saying.
Can we resolve that outside of the meeting?
No.
Well, not the board, but.
I mean, his opinion does state that where, uh, where one-point-five requires a special permit through the planning board, the most restrictive.
Just as.
Or this project requires a special permit from AHJ.
Right, with, with, that's what I was trying to contend, is that we are the AHJ, Authority Having Jurisdiction.
Uh-huh.
That was my point.
You're the SP, SPGA.
Yeah, where's the SPB?
Mo USC.
Yes, right in the table.
Yeah, so, I, I agree with that, and there's no argument on that.
Right.
Well, of course it wouldn't be.
If there is, we're gonna stop and figure it out.
There'll be a debate the other side.
You know, I remember back, what, eight years, going through this with certain parts of our zoning bylaws, with, you know, uncertain things.
As far as the temperature is.
Why is it?
So let Nathan speak, please.
You know, in, in, whoever grants it, that it getting granted in the opinion of the board, um, I'll just go back to what I start with each time, is I'm, I am delighted that this property is being renovated, and so I wanna be, you know, working with the applicant to, I think, and I, to, to, to make that happen legally, um, and so I, I don't see this, and, and actually, this is a much better solution than the previous solution. I don't, I, my personal opinion is I, I like the two-bedroom apartments, uh, air needs more multi-bedroom apartments, uh, commercial space is great, so I'm in favor of working with the authority, if it's us, that will make it easy, to, um, to get this permit through.
Thank you.
Julie, Jeff, anything?
Um, I think this is a, an improved use of the building, it doesn't in any way, in my, to my, to my eyes, it doesn't put any undue duress upon the neighborhood, as a matter of fact.
It's improved.
Mr. King, it's an improvement. We have something that's been sitting there for a long, long time, I think moving it forward makes a lot of sense. It is a square peg in a round hole, it just is.
Yep.
It's close to the sidelines, doesn't have the space, blah, 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 but again, it's a residential use in a resident, in, in a, in a transform, in a, what I consider to be a kind of a transfer spot in the neighborhood, so I'm open to being supportive of it, moving forward.
And the applicant has made a good-faith gesture to address the concerns of the abutting neighbor.
Yes.
About the, you know, giving some space there that could be screened or whatever, could get some treatment, so, yeah, I agree.
It's not an open, it's not an open, excuse me, it's not an open piece of land upon which you can do something new. There are restrictions because of the building type and, I don't know, so I think we have to be, I think we have to be open-minded to it.
Yep.
And that may cause a problem internally here in the town hall, but.
I think in the, in this situation, we're looking at the problem we're gonna have everywhere in downtown. Downtown is a special entity to itself.
Yep.
We as a board, I think, should be able to use our own common sense and good, you know, judgment to figure out how we can make this project happen. It's been through like six or eight years of, of questions. In previous renditions, it was a hundred percent residential, in some other renderings it had seven units, in some renderings it had five or six units. Calvin had it as affordable housing, Calvin Moore, I mean, and, in all due respect to all the questions that have come up, I think it's overdoing a situation that we all wanna get to approve. So we're gonna have to use our best judgment, that there is no clear-cut box that it fits into, as Jeff said, it's a square peg in a round hole, there's no box in our zoning that it lands right there.
And I don't think.
In my estimation, a mixed-use building with office on the first floor and one apartment on the first floor and three apartments on the second floor is so close to what the intent of the downtown air business district is, or the Form Base Code District, whichever we might fall into. I think we wanna move it along.
Well said.
Thank you. So moving on to special permit number two.
Please.
Uh, that is referencing having a dwelling unit at grade in a commercial building. That is referencing having a dwelling unit at grade in a commercial building. Or a mixed-use, in this case, a mixed-use building. Although bylaw says "commercial" building. And because, as you know, because the bylaw specifically uses unit rather than units, that was the objection that your building inspector had in spite of Mark's clarification that I thought was well done. Building inspector didn't rescind that, so he's still standing by the fact that he wants, he thinks it requires a variance. So in that case, we have two courses of action, both of, or three actually, two of which we don't like. One is to appeal his decision, the second is to apply for a variance, which we clearly do not want to do, and the third is to reduce it by one unit, which Mr. Gallagher has agreed to do. So now we have one unit accessible at the... on the ground floor of a, of a mixed-use building, which according to his read of the bylaw then does require the second special permit, which is what it would be for that single unit.
For a single unit.
Yep, yeah, 1-7, 1-5. For the record, I agree with Mark's assessment of this and what he was told, but...
His discussion, unit also suggests units.
Correct.
Because the English, the English use of the word in the sentence does not hold us to singular or plural.
I agree.
If I may say it grammatically correct, as correct as I could. I didn't get so much past sixth grade, so, you know.
If I understand that the applicant, the path you want to follow is go with the one unit and then go for the special permit, and that's unambiguous in the, in the table uses.
Correct.
And I...
Go ahead, Jeff.
I... I like hired... I'm a... I'm a fan of density. I'm a fan of density that includes affordable and stuff like that, and I'm not going to, I'm going to stop there. I think, again, it's a square peg in a round hole. We got, and I do want to see this project move forward.
Me too.
So...
You got a third one, Cal? Is there another special permit issued? Or that's it? Those are the two?
Now, I will say that in our application, and we do this anytime we make special permit or variance applications, we've also got a clause in that says, "We hereby request any special permits or waivers the planning board may feel is required under this bylaw." By including that one sentence in there, if there is another waiver request that we haven't asked for, that we, that uncover as we go through this process, that we've hereby asked for that, and same with special permit. We don't anticipate any more special permits. There is, based on the DPW's letter, potentially a request for another waiver that we need to ask for, but I just wanted to point out that we have that clause in there.
Mark, you just heard what Cal said. We're covered there?
Yeah, I believe so. I know some of the, uh, the parking issues, you know, we could mostly probably, I would think, handle with a waiver.
Yeah.
Okay.
And because they have one less unit, it frees up a little space there for parking, right?
So if you... do you want to go through the waiver requests that we're asking for, to relieve?
Did we vote on some of these already?
Uh, actually, well...
Yeah, you did, actually, yeah.
Yeah, 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 for the, for the studies, for the traffic impact statement and some of the other studies.
I thought you might have voted on the first one. You had said that at your previous meeting, but I wasn't sure.
Pretty sure we voted on the landscaping letter.
Oh, yeah, landscaping and lighting.
I thought we did. Landing, accommodation. I think the only one that was left was the two parking ones. I think we voted on the other ones.
Yeah, I think we did.
Three and four.
So it's just the parking, I believe, that's still at issue, right?
Was it in the minutes of the...? Well, we have enough...
We don't have the minutes for that yet.
But, uh, yeah, and there was a parking management plan in the, the new application, correct. Yeah, so I think, I think my advice would not to, you know, vote on those waivers until we see the new package, obviously.
I think that's fair, right. That makes sense.
Yeah, right.
But I think we...
It's not going to change. The parking is... waiver isn't going to change, I don't think.
No, no, they shouldn't.
You don't want to do that, then, no? Get it done?
What? Waive, waive the...
The two waivers.
We don't know what's going to happen yet.
Let's just get the final plan and we'll do it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's easy enough to do. Yeah.
Yeah, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to...
In case. Yeah, I don't think we need to.
So I... I mean, let me test, if I may ask a question. The plan that you have here represents the parking as you expected it to be when you asked for the waiver?
Yes.
Yeah, if you scroll.
Parking will not change, based on this.
If you scroll down, if I... Mr. Goldsmith pointed out at the beginning that this is actually the plan to be used for waivers. The final plan set's not done, but this one won't change.
The parking will not change.
Even with one less unit?
Right, because we need 11 units. We need 11 parking spaces under the bylaw. Two per unit, times five is 10, plus one visitor is 11. And now because we're eliminating a two-bedroom unit, we're eliminating two spaces, so we need nine. We're only providing seven. So we're still...
It's mathematically impossible to get to.
Right, it doesn't allow us to reduce the parking in front of the building.
Okay, you don't want to provide six. Okay.
Well, it's the same, we have the same issue, though. If we have an afford, a handicap, then we're going to have to have that extra space, and you would ask us to show it. I think it makes sense. The only thing I'll point out is...
I just actually thought we were at that point. I think that's what Mr. Diskin was trying to say, so...
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Actually, yeah, I... I feel ready. Nathan, Julie?
Sure.
I just think we can make some progress this evening.
Yeah, let's make some progress.
And I think we've made some progress also. You have a pretty good understanding of what's happening out there.
The motion we need is a, is a finding for the... how do we address a waiver? We...
You have it in front of you, Ken, why don't you go for it?
You would go to grant the specific waiver.
Well, let's open it for discussion first, so we review the waiver first before we...
Yes.
Vote on it. Does anyone...
It's in the application package.
Have a copy of the waiver?
Might have to read it.
So the only change in the waiver, the waiver number one, which was the 9.12 off-street parking, now this paragraph in the narrative would change because instead of proposing five two-bedrooms, it's talking about four two-bedrooms, and as pointed out by Mr. Goldsmith, instead of a total of 11 spaces required, it would be nine. So we're basically asking for a waiver to go from the nine required to seven required in this particular 9.12, which is the calculation section about how many...
Right.
Parking spaces are needed for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio apartments. So using that calculation, we would get down to nine, but now we only are requesting seven, right?
That's correct.
The seven in this case, as he pointed out, includes the additional spot needed in case one of those spaces needs to turn into a handicap space, which is equivalent to double the space of a standard parking space.
If I may, I just wanted to point out one more thing before you vote on this. Because we showed the sidewalk between the four spaces right in the middle there, that takes the northernmost boundary of the lower, of the southern spaces, and pushes it about four feet to the north, which puts it slightly in front of that window.
Yeah.
But we felt, we felt to have pedestrian, safe pedestrian access and not walking in among the cars, we had that, that walkway in there.
That's where you're going to put the, the e-charger, right, right there in front of the windows, too?
Yeah, something like that.
Oh, were that fired?
Okay. So to take action, do we, do we, do, we don't have to re-script the waiver request, as long as it's articulated orally, but as Mr. Diskin has done, right, we can take a motion?
Yeah, cite the section again. Is it 9112?
9112A2.
A2.
I'll make a motion that the Air Planning Board grant a waiver as requested by the applicant for the section 912 dot A dot 2, section off-street parking requirements of the air zoning by law general regulations to allow for seven parking spaces where nine are required.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay, waiver's approved.
Thank you very much.
Was there a second one?
Number two, waiver number two.
Yeah. Sorry, I just...
Yeah, you want to take it?
I don't have it in front of me, you do.
You want to take it?
Yeah. So the waiver number two, no parking should be located closer to the front lot line than the front line of any principal building except by special permit from the planning board. In no event shall the planning board grant a special permit to locate more than 15% of the required spaces in front of the principal building. This was one that we had discussion about earlier that you felt you had the ability to waive this requirement, given that this is a pre-existing parking area, that it's been that way since the building was built. These parking spaces have been here, and all we're doing is really delineating them more formally and providing them, parking on the lot itself with a separate sidewalk. So it, because it predates the air bylaw, we don't feel it requires the special permits required, and a waiver would be adequate, which is what you had felt as well last time.
Yeah. What's the section number, though?
915, 9 dot 15 dot C dot 1.
Yep, thank you.
I'd like to just make a comment on this, which is kind of important. The second sentence, which you know, Cal, says, "In no event shall the planning board grant a special permit to locate more than 15% of the required off-street parking spaces in front of the principal building." So it's kind of strange that we're talking about a waiver, but the exclusion is for a special permit.
Right.
So when we get to the special permits, do you need to apply for a special permit for that little sentence on?
Well, I think the fact that if you decide that this applies, which we're saying it doesn't because these parking spaces predate the bylaw.
Yeah.
If it says it applies, then in no eventual, the planning board grant that special permit for more than 15%, kind of handcuffs you.
Right, it sure does.
And the fact that there is no other place to park on the entire site, this is the only place it can be.
Yeah.
I think you're leaning heavily on the fact that it predates the bylaw.
I just want to make sure that we're... sorry.
Because I don't think you can grant that special permit.
I would just say my understanding is similar to Cal's, yeah.
So I want to be clear that the waiver that we're granting for this is given by our authority in section 9110.
Correct.
Under modifications and waivers. Even though, even though we're granting a waiver for a section that precedes it, we're using authority granted us under the modifications and waivers sections.
I think the motion could reflect that. That would be nice.
Yeah, it'd have to, yeah. And the wording there is the planning board may approve modifications or waivers of the requirements of the section 91, which include the whole section, for compelling reasons of safety, aesthetic, site design, or environmental impact. So we're using the site design concept for a modification or waiver to a previously required.
And I see us granting a waiver to that section, not granting a special permit?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
I was trying to figure out how to get over that.
It's the making the laws. It's ugly, but it'll get done.
It's sausage. Okay. So who wants to take a stab at making a motion here?
You have the numbers in front of you. Can you do it?
Thank you, bud.
You have the, you have the, no, you have the whatchamacallit in front of me. I don't have the bylaw in front of me.
Half the power.
What we're talking about, never mind.
I was going to say, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
May need help with this one. I'll make a motion that the Air Planning Board grant a waiver request, number two, to the project at 14 Washington Street, as proposed by the applicant, to waive section 9.15 dot C dot 1, which is the section regarding parking closer to the front lot line and front line of the building, and also the section regarding a special permit, which requires no more than 15% of the required off-street parking spaces in front of the principal building. And this waiver will be granted in compliance with section 9.1.10 modifications and waivers, which allows the planning board to make such a waiver possible because of existing site conditions and site design.
Beautiful.
Yep.
Lovely, thank you. Do I have a second? Any, any, any discussion?
Masterfully done.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Very good.
I'll make one, actually, now.
Yes, sir.
Comment. Yeah, we put up a lot of... We made a, we made an argument for the parking management plan, and there is, you know, there is a parking management plan in the application. I am looking, we do need to address parking in this town, and I am looking for help from applicants on how we are going to shape parking, as well as, you know, the residents who were here previously. This is a very lightweight parking management plan. And does, it does state that, you know, basically that you're going to benefit from a bike rack and a train station. And it won't apply to you, but this is more for the board, that, you know, I think parking management, parking management plans should have a little more teeth, a little more, uh, logic.
And Nathan, if I may respond to that?
Yeah.
I think if we are going to insist on that, then it's incumbent upon us to be clear to applicants what we want in a parking management plan, and we're going to have to devise, articulate what we want, and put it into writing.
It's not for this, this one?
Not for today, but, yeah, look at you, because your comments are well taken. I think in all fairness, the applicants can't be in a position of guessing what it is we want in such a plan. We have to be sure to define it.
No, no, when an applicant comes with a business plan, right, you've got a business model in mind, help us understand that so that we can shape our bylaws for the future. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I insist on a, on a parking management plan.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, because you can, now you can modify that to four residential units from five. The management plan.
He's got his own engineers. Do we move to continue the site plan and special permit public hearing?
Please.
Right, if I...
There's always more.
Well, I wanted to bring up the all-important issue of the timing of everything.
Back to page.
That, that, I was going to mention the timeline in the request for an extension, but we'll get to that after that.
Sorry.
Just flip the pages, other waivers related to the parking?
Oh, there are.
Yes. Section 9.1.5C2 states that no parking space should be located within eight feet of a building or wall or 10 feet of a lot line. And same logic, they pre-exist, they don't meet those requirements, they can't meet those requirements. And this is not, this is just a straight waiver. It's not, there's no special permit involved in this. Be safer access than pedestrians, pedestrians walking into the commercial businesses, tenants living in the building, therefore, we request a waiver of this requirement. Basically the same logic from the previous one. Predates the bylaw.
Okay. You want to... You're on fire, Ken. You're on fire.
I actually think the, the second paragraph that you quoted, dot 10?
Yeah.
Covers this.
It does cover it, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah.
Motion has to cover the whole, whatever, we'll do it. I make a motion that the Air Planning Board grant a waiver number three under the parking conditions in waiving section 9.15C2, which states no parking should be located within eight feet of a building wall or 10 feet of a lot line. And we use that power to grant the waiver under section 9.1110, no, 9.110, modifications and waivers, as stated in the zoning bylaws.
Second.
Discussion?
I think we pretty much know the logic is the same with this as the others. It's a restricted parking space. We need to make it work.
And, and, exactly, and that's what I, the only comment I would add is that, you know, we are obligated to support our findings by reason and law, and this, there's no other way to get this project done, right? They're just, it's just common sense for, for the logic of the site design that exists. So I think it's entirely appropriate.
Yeah, I want to make one comment on this that I kind of made at the last meeting to the, through the chairman again. I want this project to leave our jurisdiction with the correct permits and the correct analysis so that it doesn't have any other stoppages. Whatever we can handle by giving, the paperwork may be excessive in some cases, but I'd rather have the paperwork done right so you, the project can move ahead when they leave. So I think we should have that as a goal, that's all I'm saying.
That's why we avoided appeals.
Yeah, okay, cool.
It has to be clean, and it can't leave any scars on the existing or future title. So it needs to be very clean.
And then...
Yeah, did you have a further comment?
Nope, ready to vote.
All right, it's time to vote. All in favor?
Who made the motion, sorry.
Kent did, and then...
Can I second it?
Jeff, seconded? Sorry about that. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
So if there's any problem, I go down in flames for the making of the motion.
No, you won't. We all do. We all burn together.
My recollection, Mark, is that the next waiver request you granted already at the last, previous meeting, which was the landscaping and lighting.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought we did that.
I think all the rest of those have been granted.
My only question then is the pedestrian accommodations, the four-foot wide continuous landscape strip between the sidewalk and the right-of-way line of the street, which obviously we can't provide. So we're requesting a waiver of that as well. I don't know if you granted that already or not. I didn't think so, but...
I would have to go, I would have to check the minutes or...
It was not discussed, okay. 917.
So let's do it to it, then.
So we have provided pedestrian accommodation. This is just for the landscape strip.
Right.
The beauty strip that typically happens along the road between the sidewalk and the property.
Oh, I want to point that out. Oh, we can point it out.
So it's right, this is our sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are the edge of our, the back of our parking spaces. There is no four-foot place to put... Restroom.
Does anyone want to relieve Ken on this one?
I just don't know the, I don't know the quote, which sections of the, of the bylaw, so thank you very much. I'm more than happy to do it.
Give it, give it to Jeff.
Okay. Waiver, you want to do it? I'll do it. There you go. Thanks.
I move the Air Planning Board grant waiver request, this is number four, for 14 Washington Street, section, referring to section 917, 9 dot 1 dot 7 dot C dot 2, to waive the requirement for a four-foot wide landscape strip between the sidewalk and, and the parking.
Seconded.
May I, oh, sorry, I need to amend that, based on the authority granted to the board in section 9 dot 1 dot 10.
Thank you. I was actually going to ask, do you would consider that a friendly amendment?
I seconded it the way you said it.
Julie seconded it?
Would you consider seconding his amended motion?
I seconded whatever needed to be seconded.
The answer is, I believe, yes, Mr. Chair. I would submit the answer is yes.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In light of the fact that the applicant has come in and added this slightly off-site piece in here, I think it offsets the lack, a loss of the piece that is in front of the building. If that would be worked out with the neighbor, I think that would more than offset the requirement that we set forth in the, in the, in the bylaw.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff?
I agree with what Mr. Diskin says, but I also amplify the fact that the applicant has worked very hard to maintain the access through green space to the architectural elements on the front of the... on the front of the building as requested. And it's understandable that, given, again, the size and shape of the project and the need to maintain what's there from a historical standpoint, this is a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
Amen. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Unanimous.
So I have another thing to talk about relative to parking, and I thought it might require a waiver from you, but I don't think it does. And that is because I had misread it. In the DPW comments, the first comment was the proposed plan shows two proposed curb cuts twenty-seven and thirty-one feet wide. These are nine-foot spaces, so three on top is twenty-seven, three on the bottom plus the four-foot walkway is, is thirty-one. That exceeds the maximum with the curb cut normally permitted by the Air DPW. I thought it was by your parking regulations, by the Air DPW. So that's, I don't know what, I don't believe that they can force us to reduce the curb cut, and I don't.
Excuse me, I don't know what the remedy is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, nothing we can do about it.
I think the remedy is being realistic.
Yeah, so I think that's advice to the board, which the board can take or leave.
Yeah.
And I don't think it requires a waiver from the board.
No, that's. Do we need like a letter from Dan, the same?
They should approach Dan separately on just for that.
I mean, they obviously know that this is.
It's almost like the driveway curb cut or.
Think they're just trying to cover all the, dot all the i's and cross it.
It just sounds like for your own coverage, perhaps get a letter from Dan Fenskawick, just getting his, his consent.
I can't promise you that he will give us a letter saying.
We understand that.
I mean, I responded to this in writing to the planning board. I enumerated his comments and my response to it, and I think we copied him on it, but if not, I'll make sure to get that to him.
And, and I think, Mr. Chair, I would submit that we may be short on understanding why that's a requirement of the DPW. If it's a requirement based on roadway design, or if it's a requirement for some safety reason or something, I think it makes sense to plumb the depths of that a little bit, but I think reason will probably win out.
Okay.
This is, again, a pre-existing, non-conforming project, in my eyes. And not to argue on behalf of the proponent, but I think.
I understand.
You know?
When you're talking, excuse me, Mr. Tia, just a question for Cal and Mark. When you're talking to the DPW, are you gonna let them know that you intend to improve that concrete, that sidewalk from a bituminous to a concrete sidewalk?
Yeah, so we're showing that on the plan, and we certainly will let them know that.
Because I think that's.
They have a new town engineer too, so he might have just been going through the regs, calling out everything he saw, which to be.
Because I think that's an improvement over what's there, so that could offset the question.
I think so as well, and they're, and they had put in the new granite curb along there for certain openings, and we, and we anticipate having to adjust those to make this work.
Yes, Nathan.
Also just, I think that's gonna be a forty-foot cut, because it's four nine-foot spaces and a four-foot walkway.
It's forty.
Yeah, it looks like it. It was, yeah, this was written when it was only three, and we've added one, so good point. Yeah, you're right.
So make sure it's.
Well, that'll make him happier, then.
It's ready. Go in for the whole.
Yeah, go in for the whole thing. You're absolutely right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, but as Jeff said, realistically, this is, this is what it takes.
And they also, just to talk about, as long as we have it going, the proposed parking layout would result in encroachment of parked trucks into the public sidewalk. I don't see that. The spaces are nine by eighteen, which is what's required. It's a residential use for those spaces. Pickup truck will fit in there. If it's a box truck and delivery, it's gonna be short-lived, be there shortly, and it would be a, a short-lived encroachment for delivery or something, so I don't, I don't see that as, I'm not sure how they can make that statement, if they think.
We see that every day on Washington Street.
Yeah, exactly. I'd rather see this.
That's an everyday occurrence.
The box truck sits right next to the restaurant up on the curb and take up the street.
We have a pickup truck that's been parked on Central Avenue, overhanging the sidewalk to the, almost to the curb line, all winter long. So.
So just point that out, and then they also, their third comment was, they wanted to add a note on the site landscaping plan that the Air DPW be notified to inspect the proposed granite sidewalk and curbing. We will do that. Don't see a problem with that. Stormwater clogs, they agree with us that it will reduce runoff, which is, we agree. They asked for test pit data. We had addressed that previously, I think with the board. We talked about doing the test pits during construction, just prior to the installation and making changes if we need to at that time, because it'd be difficult to do it this time. And they also asked for an operate, an as-built plan of the site, and when it's done, specifically of the subsurface infiltration, which is easy enough to do, and then an operations and maintenance plan, which we will provide for that subsurface drainage. And then they talked about the hydrant. We said we're gonna save it, and then they want the sewer service, because we're, we're using all the existing connections to the building, they want the sewer cambered. And we said we'd do that if it hasn't been done already.
Probably not a unreasonable thing to do.
And they had no other comments beyond those on the waiver requests that you just granted.
Okay. So we'll see you at the next meeting.
I gotta come.
Oh, do you?
Now I.
Whoa, we got some.
The clock expires sometime between April eleventh and the next meeting after that, so here. The extension letter, yes. I'll read it. Dear Mark, acting for and representing our client Seal Harbors LLC, please accept this letter as a request to extend, to extend the planning board's statutory timeframe for rendering a decision on our request for site plan approval from the current April eleventh deadline to May ninth, 2023.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, that gives the planning board several meetings to cover all this.
Good.
Yep.
Couple more questions from them.
Go.
So Mark, did you really, did you, have you settled on what you would do with that extra space? Would you, my curiosity is that it would, might be additional office space or something like that?
We're thinking it's some kind of internal storage space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's too small, I think, for, you know, when you think about a use that's actually gonna generate income, I'm not sure it's, it's too small for much of anything.
Yeah, okay.
So you're thinking that it's just gonna be an adjunct to the design center, and it'll be, you know, some type of storage, unless you guys have any ideas.
No, I just figured that's what you were gonna do.
Yeah, no, I thought we had a good use the first time.
In all the years I managed condos and other, and mixed use, everyone wants a little extra storage space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We pay money for a ton of storage space now in air, and it's.
Tenants may need storage.
Be nice to get away from it.
But it's, but it's also, yeah, residents also, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you gonna put the holiday decorations?
Yeah.
Only so much stuff goes under the bed.
My wife says architects never design enough closet space.
Frequent refrain.
Yeah.
Are we ready to move on?
I believe we are.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Did you have a further comment?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Is there any public comment tonight?
Oh.
I'm sorry, Ruth? No, I think Pauline left, so.
I'd like to move that we continue the site plan and special permit public hearing for Seal Harbor Company Central Fire Station, fourteen Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into five residential apartments, one unit of commercial, I'm sorry, four residential units. Thank you. One unit of commercial office space and a two-story addition to the south side of the building. Still correct until our next.
Single-story addition to the north side of the building.
A single-story addition to the north side of the building, until, until our next Air Planning Board meeting.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Nathan? Mark, what is your next meeting?
April eleventh. I'll say before I leave. When you made the comment before about the robust report.
Yes.
And we've had discussions about our being the first developer really to do this kind of thing, but it's what you want, right? Downtown, to be revived and changed.
Absolutely, yes.
And your form base really brings this kind of use forward, which I think is great, right?
Yes.
From a development standpoint, you've gotta get a partnership like we have going on here on a larger base. There have to be solutions for parking. A developer, if you want developers to come in, and there's several parcels for sale now, which I'm sure he would love to help you, you know, with engineering, there has to be some overall study of what your parking is existing, what you have for availability of parking, what your plans are for parking, because none of the properties that are for sale or are going to be revived are going to provide parking. I mean, this actually is probably better in a lot of ways than the majority of them on, on the front, on Main Street, because you have literally no ability to have parking along the face of a building.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have all non-conforming uses.
So, given, given your comment, and I take it to heart, if I, if I may, are you aware what's been going on in Somerville and Cambridge?
Somewhat.
Parking restrictions have been removed.
Yeah.
We've gone through it.
Well, I think with form base, you have.
And I know I say, and I, and I know I say, when I say Cambridge and Somerville, the people's Republic of Somerville, the people's Republic of Cambridge, but we're not so different here because of the way downtown area was built. I'm a proponent in some extent, from a cars and table. It's a solution that the economics of the community will solve. I hear what you're saying when a developer doesn't wanna come in.
We just need, if you want a robust study, which I understand, you have to have information to be able to draw upon. How many spaces are there? What are they allocated for? The timing of the spaces, are they open during the evening so that they will be able to be used, almost like on a rental basis with no money involved, that you can use these spaces in the evening? Because if you want to have, when your form base residences, you need for a single apartments or two-bedroom or three-bedroom, you have, yes, it's great that the, the train is there, but not everybody's gonna use the train. And, you know, you teased a little bit about a charging station, but, I mean, you know, it's where it's going to be, right? So you've gotta allocate for that to be on the cutting edge of the redevelopment. I'm not a big redevelopment person, you know, my company's small compared to the people that you really wanna invite in, but you've gotta kind of have the statistics available to be able to build a robust plan, is what all my point is. So it's gonna be a partnership from the beginning, that if you wanna invite the development, you have to have solutions for the developer, because you're not gonna have solutions by buying a, a single property that's sitting out on Main Street today. It's just gonna encumber your parking more and more. And if you go to a waiver and you have that information available, then the developer knows that he has something to rely on before he sinks his deposit in and before he starts doing engineering work. There's gotta be some kind of overall, I think, you've started with the form base, which I think is fantastic, but now it has to, you, you've seen that, just this evening, we got tripped up on a very small item, and that's not what you wanna do. I mean, you know, you wanna avoid those trips to the ZBA and others.
And I appreciate, thank you.
That's my own point.
I appreciate.
It's great.
Because I think he had a great comment.
Oh, yeah.
Right? We were light on, on the information, but there wasn't a lot of information, right?
And, and, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanna move along with the.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
We've approved a form base code with no parking. Seventeen units, no parking.
That would be.
Didn't get filled. Parking management plan.
With a parking management plan, but no.
Parking management plan with a.
A parking management plan, but with no onsite parking. So I think we understa, you're right, and I, I don't know if the study will ever get done.
No, I understand, but I'm just.
One small comment. I, I, thank you, Mark. I really appreciate that. What I'm also looking, though, is for creative solutions from the business side that says, we're going to put in, we're gonna have an interior bike rack equipped with bikes, right? We're gonna, we're gonna, you know, I don't know what those solutions are, but thinking creatively from the business, yes, we have a responsibility to do a study from the town side.
Just have some statistics, that's all.
That's what I'm looking for from the business side, is we're gonna do something creative that's gonna actually encourage people not to buy cars.
Get that deck.
I just have a final comment, not about this, but Mark, you know, you're, you're getting ready for bylaw changes at some point. The kind of stuff that we ran into with, you know, that shouldn't have to be a, a judgment made by the zoning enforcement officer to pull something out of the sky. I mean, it ought to be, if you're gonna say you gotta do this and this and this to get a special permit, it ought to be everything that you're requiring a special permit for should be listed, not just some of them, and, and hope for the best on the other ones. I know this is square peg round hole, but it's still the, the idea that you're making, you know, if you're gonna require a special permit to go from a not, a non-residential use to a mixed use, then it ought to be in your bylaw. Otherwise, it shouldn't.
Right, it's a, and it's not just something that you really want. Affordable unit, downtown, first floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's the disappointing part of it, so. Yep. Thank you for everything this evening.
Thanks.
Thanks for very, for.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Turn to town planner update. I just wanna ask a question. Did you wanna bring up the Green International proposal as part of the update, or?
Yes.
Good, let's start, wanna start with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that seems to be the most urgent, right?
I think, yeah, it's the most urgent matter. Yeah, at the prior meeting, there was concern by the board that it wasn't explicitly clear in Green's proposal that, that documents went through eight weren't the ones that they were actually gonna review, 'cause the reason I gave them these earlier documents from the prior definitive plan is they needed something to go by in order to come up with their proposal and estimate for the amount of work. But he made clear in a statement that I think, you know, is, is clear at the bottom of page one, "Our review will also include the review of the revised spring 2023 versions of the following documents, but not the actual documents listed below on the following page." So that makes it very clear that, that, you know, they're not gonna relook at the old plan, they're gonna go to.
But those documents are proxies for the type of documents that they would with you.
That's the word I was looking for. Excellent. You must be a.
Writer.
Professor.
There you know.
A writer. And also in the task description for number two, civil engineering review, I made sure to have them add air subdivision regulations and air stormwater regulations.
Thank you.
Because previous to that, they just had air zoning bylaws. And as I mentioned earlier too, I did let Bob, Attorney Collins know, and I went over the price, and they were, you know, a little grumpy, but, you know, that's what we have to do. And, you know, I think it's very important, you know, that, that the plan set could arrive anytime, and it will certainly, I would, I would think within the next two weeks. So having Green in place when the plan set is ready, also, Bob Collins is agreeable to have the consultant have two weeks of time in which to review the plans for technical completeness.
Oh, good.
So that we don't waste time like we did in 2021 with an incomplete set that we weren't aware was incomplete until time had gone on. So this, I think, will be more efficient. So what, I guess I would seek from the board this evening is if you're in agreement that the plan, the proposal has been amended to address the previous deficiencies that the board authorized me to execute the contract, and I'll have, you know, the town manager sign it, and we'll get a signed version from the consultant, and we'll be able to hit the ground running.
Good. Comments?
I have one question, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And just wanna say it out loud and make sure it gets heard, that in typically, we have a proposal for a scope that we assume will cover the project, but, or I should say, and typically when the documents arrive, we review the scope. If there's something that isn't included, we ask them for it, or it may not be appropriate, but something else may come in. So we may pull one out and put one in, but the scope will be discussed.
Correct. Yeah, one of.
Do we have that flexibility?
Yes. One of the very first tasks, and it's well understood by all consulting engineers, is that there will be a scoping meeting with the planning board or whoever the board is to fine-tune the proposal based on actual reality. They may.
We just, this is the work to be done. Do we all agree it's covered? Yes.
Right.
Oh, it's so much different than what we thought about? Put the brakes on, bring in the proponent, and we say it has to be done.
Yeah.
There's no way the proponent's gonna argue with it.
If the plan set comes in and there's some surprise.
We're, we're not left in a position where we've under, we've, we're doing less work than we need to get done on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Is what the, is what the scope meeting is done. And it's fair to the, it's fair to the consultant also.
Yes, absolutely.
So it's, it's just, everyone's kind of above board at that point.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Any further, any other comments? Ken, did you have any thoughts on this?
You know, I'm good with Mark's diligence in updating this and whatnot. The only question
The only question I had was, I think it's related to what Jeff said. After we get into it, is there a possibility that this becomes, I wanna call it almost a schedule of values, that we could eliminate some of this work? If we find at the end of the day, it's not needed, if we get to a spot.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't have, in other words, we're not signing for the, the total, we're signing for these individual pieces almost.
Right, yes. And, and that often happens too. I think it happened with one or two of the traffic studies we did. Not all the money was spent and it gets returned because they didn't need to do all the little tasks. So yes, if there are any tasks that are determined to not be pertinent, they could be removed.
And we're, we're doing this, when we started thinking about this, we did not have a town engineer. But basically using the outside third party, ear review person, because there's enough to do, look at this project is big enough to justify it, is basically what I'm getting at.
Right.
We're thinking, okay.
Big enough and controversial enough, I think, to merit the extra attention.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we're looking for a motion to authorize.
Move to authorize the Green International affiliates updated letter dated March 24th, 2023. Move to have the town planner execute the agreement with Green International affiliates on behalf of the planning board.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Seconded. Any discussion?
I think this is, you, you, you don't execute the contract exactly yourself. It's executed by the town manager.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Moves without recommendation through.
I'm sorry, yes, move to, for Mark, Mark to move it through, have executed on behalf of the town by the town manager. Thank you, Ken.
Resecanded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mark. So we have the DLT, DLTA grant and then.
Right, just an updated project spreadsheet I wanted to quickly go through.
Oh, yeah, let's do this.
Yeah, the, well, first of all, the DLTA. You may recall that back in 2020, every year I apply for another one of these cause I've gotten pretty good at writing these. Back in 2021, we did a build out study of the downtown Park Street Form Base Code district, looking at the square footage of potential commercial space as well as the number of apartments that might be possible if they built out the downtown. At the time, I don't think West Air Village was approved yet. So the build out yielded 365 apartments potentially possible in the downtown area under the Form Base Code and 124,000 square feet of commercial space. So, you know, that's one piece of information now.
Love it.
All right.
That's an eye opener.
So last year, my, the project that I wrote and was approved was to have them assist us with the MBTA Communities Act to see if we were compliant, which we believe we are. And we, we got the interim compliance form in with the state. But now there's more stuff to prove by the end of 2024 for them to, you know, but that's something that the Regional Planning Commission said they can help with. It's technical. But as far as I'm aware, based on the numbers that they tell me, we're, we're in compliance. But the state wants all this proof, so that'll be a future project. But because we have essentially, what they had to do for that study was a build out study of the West Air Village as well. Because we're including that towards the counting for the compliance.
MBTA compliance.
Yeah, for MBTA compliance. So because we have a build out of both of those districts, I thought it would be a good first test of it, you know, to see what our infrastructure capacity is to see if, if those districts got built out. Do we have the water sewer capacity to handle the growth?
That's a great idea.
And, you know, I think, you know, it, this builds on the prior two that I just mentioned, the prior two projects. And it gives the town an idea of how to start thinking about this sort of thing, you know? And I think in the long run, in order to do a townwide infrastructure assessment, which is a great project, but in order to do that, there would have to be a build out study of the industrial districts, which would be more technical, more technical than I think the Regional Planning Commission can do, so. But that's something that this could build up towards in the future for some other grants. It might not be DLTA, but it could be some other project.
Okay.
So I saw this as a first step in, in starting to think of those terms. Yes.
Go ahead. Great, great work on the, if there is, I would also add the infrastructure, if they can do this to model traffic in all modes, particularly pedestrian traffic, what would a town with 365 apart, more apartments and all this commercial space look like with the movement of people? Through, through.
Yeah, that's a great idea, but I think that would have to be a future.
Yes.
Project, but yes, but that's, that's a great.
Infrastructure, you know, not only the sewer, but do we have the sidewalks and the roads and the.
That's, yeah, that's, that's very good.
Bike paths to handle 365 apartments.
Right, yep. Plus what else happens elsewhere in the town.
Yeah.
So, good point.
So if I may.
Chad.
I'm gonna, under new and old business, I'm gonna put something in here. So the MRPC, being the rep that Jonathan used to do it, I actually enjoy going to those meetings now.
Oh, good.
They, and I, I wanna say this in a meeting, I'd said this to Mark before the meeting. And if I'm repeating myself, I'm an old guy, I can do that now. It turns out that only two DLTA grants were actually applied for. MRPC's been understaffed and they've been unable to get the grants going. But a comment that was made is that, um, two comments were made. One is, MBTA, do we comply for the MBTA communities' needs? Pittsburgh complies. And there's only one of the community, I think the 19 communities MRPC oversees, that has, yeah, you did it. And that's AIR, okay?
AIR in Pittsburgh.
AIR in Pittsburgh. AIR doesn't have an absolute yet. But that's because, as Mark said, on state, uh, down, down the state, uh, up on, up, uh, in the State House, they're kind of changing the way they're looking at it, okay? Because a lot of communities will never, Ashby probably will never be able to comply, given, given the way it is. So, but to be honest with you, AIR is ahead of the game there from the MBTA community. And that's where the numbers come from for the growth. And that's a wonderful thing. But the, the other thing is, and it's not just Mark, the DPW does this, Alan Menoian does this, the Office of Economic Development, we are continuously going back to MRPC and getting funded work.
That's right.
This is highly technical engineering work that's getting funded on behalf of the town. And I forgot what the value of this one was. It's not a lot of money. And they, they give you a dollar figure, but it's actually some engineer's time over a, over a year. But it's like having a part-time engineer.
Right.
For 20% of the year. It's really wonderfully valuable stuff. And they see it in the larger picture, as you say, pedestrian, multimodal traffic. You also may not be aware of this, and I think it's important that, talk to Alan if you haven't. Mass DOT has changed the way numbered roads will be built. There's a change coming along Main Street. If we bill, rebuild this road and Mass DOT funds it and it's their road, they're gonna, they're going to impose certain changes for multimodal traffic. Lower congestion, lower speeds, more non-car friendly use. And that MRPC is also aware of that too. So it kind of goes hand in glove with the, the future of what's going on here. But I don't want to get lost in the fact that Mark has diligently gone out and applied for DLT grants, eh, grants, quarter after quarter after quarter, whenever they've come up to him. And here's another one that came up and got approved. And of all the communities that were in the meeting, we were granted one and I think the Winchonard Townsend was granted one. But nobody else even knew if they were making application for grants. Because their communities just aren't watching the ball. So it's, it's a, it's a feather in Mark's cap and a feather in AIR's cap that this happens.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, did you have more? I have something to throw in there, but I wanted to be sure you're.
No, no.
What about the schedule?
Oh, the table.
You want to go through that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought you meant the DLTA.
No, no, just.
Yeah, I, in the, yeah, I developed a spreadsheet of projects and I've been using this lately to track deadlines and everything. And this is something that I'd like to have somebody come up to my office, you know, to, and I will walk you through all the, the different ways I fill this out.
Remind me what 22 Fitchburg Road is? Which one is that?
Uh, that was the, the Shop and Save.
The Shop and Save project, of course. Right, thank you. Sometimes they can't go by, right, the Shop and Save project, right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to.
Right, the Bishop Road and that's.
Aware that this.
Right, Nassauia, we're still in progress, obviously 14 Washington, Stratton Hill, we're waiting on.
Yeah, Solar B.
Solar Two, we're waiting on.
Yep.
What about these, 11 Tannery Street?
That's behind there. That's something that was approved by the ZBA for auto repair back two months ago. So it's something that is, is being worked on as a site plan. So that'll be coming forward whenever.
And then Ted Maxson?
Yeah, Ted Maxson, the honey, he needs a site plan.
Supposed to get a site plan.
Yes. And he, they've hired, oh, who did they hire? I think it might be Dillis and Roy.
Okay.
Same, same engineers as for Stratton Hill.
Who?
And they'll be doing the site plan for Ted Maxson. Just, I mean, I just, so that's to look ahead.
Excellent.
So, you know, as different things come in, like, you know, like the land use meeting, you know, that's the first thing I fill in. You know, when the clock starts with the, you know, filing with the town clerk. And then, you know, given the, you know, a lot of, a lot of the information by which to fill this out is in the planning board, planning board rules and regulations, as well as the site plan regs and the stormwater regs and the subdivision regs, so.
Great.
Um, Grotten Shirley Road, anyone's been out there recently? They, have you not been there? The tanks have been installed.
Oh, groovy.
The concrete standards and the tanks are sitting in the concrete standards. Now that those are there, I imagine, haven't been by in five or six days. But I imagine now what they'll start doing is the rest of the infrastructure around with the tank. Tanks are not being used. They're not piped in. There's no electricity to them. They've just been laid in the cradles at this point.
Great.
On the Grotten Shirley Road.
Thank you. Great.
Yep, so that's all I have this evening.
So.
The update.
I believe we have the one, the January 24th meeting minutes? Did you guys, I, I know this arrived today and there were some edits. Do you guys feel that you have sufficient time that we can move to an approval tonight?
Uh, just to note, this paper copy is the second to the most recent one.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it has all the corrections that came out.
Well, the most important one is make sure that Julie's present. So let's add that.
I don't know how I was informed to make seconds in motions here, but.
And there was something about medication.
If you look at the first page, the last word, it said plan medicat, plan medication, not plan modification.
That's cause I.
What's interesting is I didn't see it either, but I totally agree that it should be modification, not medication.
So.
They're medication.
Could I have a motion to approve with the, with the proviso that it reflects the latest revision that includes Julie Murray as being present on the 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's approved. So new business, old business, I just wanted to say that Mark, Ken and myself went to the CPTC event at Holy Cross. And I think I've heard from both of them, and I would agree that was the best one yet that I think did. It was really, really informative. And I want to, there's a couple of takeaways I wanted to share with you, and I'm hoping that Ken and Mark will leap in as appropriate. One of the presentations was about doing tricky, complex, you know, housing projects, affordable housing projects in, in urban centers. And we heard from some consultants, developers who were for-profit and nonprofit discussing their projects. Porter Square, two major projects in the kind of Leslie area and then some stuff in Somerville. The takeaway that we, I got, and of course, I encourage Ken and Mark to dive in, is that do everything possible you can to get the housing. Do it. That was, that was a, the, the two words, do it. And, and what they pointed out is that every project is gonna have complexities. And we, you know, my jaw dropped when I heard about some of the complexities, some of the things that they had to go through over many years. But they said, you know what? That's the way it's going to be. And I thought that that was really helpful to understand. So that when we're confronted with projects and it's tricky, we got different department opinions, we got different interests in town, we should just take that as, yep, standard operating procedure, that's the way it's gonna be. But it's worth, you know, the word from the state is, it's worth persevering. Where, uh, the, the keynote from the lieutenant governors that were shy 200,000 units, housing units. And they are eager to see us do whatever is possible to close the gap. So there's that. So there's just that mindset perspective. The other thing I learned was it's really fascinating discussion about something called, is it one stop for grants? One?
Yes, yeah. I didn't, I didn't go to that session.
And. Community one stop for.
Community one stop for growth. And what it is, it consolidates 12 different grant applications, I think in four different categories into one. You can make one application in one place. Now, that's a little complicated, but it's almost like two phases, much like our preliminary plan versus definitive. So if you, you can submit before, like this last time, the date was just one day before our conference, like March 17th or something.
It was March 17th.
March 17th. At that point, you don't have to determine which of the 12 it fits in. You could submit as, we're interested in doing that, and they will give you advice about where they think it can go.
You knew that, right?
After that date.
Oh, okay.
Roughly.
Yeah. So, so this is interesting. After that date, for the formal application, then you have to have clarity about which exact one you're going to. But you will have had the feedback, right? And you will get the assistance. This one stop is very promising. And I have a file, they, they, they passed out the, the presentation. And I'm hoping, Mark, we may want to suggest to other town departments, maybe this requires it, you know, land, at a land use meeting to have a, a talk about the one stop for growth. Because I feel that all of us should be aware of it because there's a lot of good stuff in there. And I know we're capable of pulling together great grants. And I think we should just have, keep in mind what's really available for, for, for us.
And if I may, I, I'm not aware of that presentation you saw, but I, in, in speaking to people at planning, it was explained to me the same way that, I'm gonna show my age, kids apply for college now.
Yeah.
There's a universal application process.
Yeah, it sounds like.
And you get feedback along the way. If you didn't get it right, they let you know, they, what are you missing? So it, it just, it just, you do the work once and you get, and you get the feedback you need.
Exactly.
Number one, yeah. No, that's okay. And I have, I actually have a question of the chair. I'm not sure if you, if anybody saw the governor's conversation about the need for housing. And I was watching it the other day, I, whatever was on, it was on, we were at home. And Bonnie turned to me and she said, AIR's doing all of this. Why don't you write a letter to the governor, let them know what we're doing?
You know, that's not a bad idea.
So. What?
He says he has a comment too, but you finish it.
Yeah, so, um, we got a guy at the table here who can write, who can write.
Who's that?
But I, but I was gonna, Bonnie said to me, you ought to write her a letter.
I have to put on my big boy pants sometimes.
So I would, I would, I would ask, not tongue in cheek and not funny, I think it may, first of all, we want Noah, the Noah project to go forward. But would the board consider a quick, hey, we've been working on this quietly in our little neck of the woods? And if that would have any value or not to the town? I, I lay that out. I don't, no motion, no vote. We discuss it, you know?
I want to build on that. I'd say I think it's a good idea, we should also tie it to potential request from the governor.
Well, guess what?
So let's think about what would that would be, what we want. Do we want the governor to visit? Do we want, what do we want? Let's think about that.
I want Noah to get funding.
There you go.
And AIR comments to move forward. I want to heighten the view, I want to heighten the view. Mr. Diskin has been toiling away in the, in, in, in the obscurity of the Affordable Housing Committee for three years. No, I'm, I'm dead serious. Alicia Hershey, Alicia Hershey in economic development, community development. Late nights, doing amazing yeoman's duty, carrying the water for a project. You know, and it will, it'll, 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 40%, almost 40% of our community can benefit from that.
Well said.
So.
So Ken, you had something?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll go back to.
Please.
But the way, the way this goes is you have a choice of a number of programs. I think it's about, I don't know, 20 to 35 hour programs you can pick. So you choose which ones you want to take in two morning sessions and one in the afternoon. Coincidentally, Jonathan and I picked two of the same in the morning. And then we, I, I would happen to be one with Mark in the afternoon. The, the thing that, I, I have some notes here that I took, that's why Jonathan said we were, we were gonna talk about it. And it was very fascinating what we heard tonight. Because the strongest point that was made, the first session we took was actually titled, "Small Scale All Affordable Housing." And these gentlemen that spoke were developers. There were two that were nonprofit and one that was profit. I actually asked a question, I was confused, I thought they were all nonprofit. Because the projects they were building were all 100% affordable. So I just took it for granted. They put up slides and showed you that a minimum is like five. They put up slides and showed you that a minimum is like five years to commit, to get this done, okay?
Huge.
The list of banks, the list of partners is 15 to 20, I mean, it's mind-boggling list of people they have to bring together. The most, the biggest thing that I wrote down here at the bottom was, a person in the audience asked a question, you know, "How could we get you to come to our community?" One of these three people. I mean, I'm thinking the same thing. We're going to give these names to Alan, you know, call these people up. The first thing out of the mouths of all of them was, "There is no project without local support."
That's it.
It must be local support. And he kind of hedged that way in us, in knowing, making things clear. But in essence, these projects are so complicated, they cannot, they will not spend one minute in a town or a city if they don't have preliminary approval in a way that they're going to get support. There's some kind of support there. So that's something we can keep. That's easy for us to remember.
Yeah.
It's all about local support.
So that was a really big, big thing. And I was, I learned that, I was surprised that they could be, this could be done either by a for-profit or a nonprofit, I just automatically, so there is a way for them to do it. And these projects were incredible in Cambridge. I mean.
They're amazing.
The thing you referred to in Cambridge was brought up also that, that day, okay, by these same gentlemen, because they had two projects in Cambridge, one in the South Shore, West Bridgeport, I think one of them was, and so forth. Cambridge voted an overlay district. That's what they ended up voting. The entire city put an overlay district on the whole city that got rid of the parking requirement. So they didn't go into the Form Base Code District, or the A1 District, or whatever the district was. They voted, that city voted to overlay the entire city and say, "No parking requirements." So these guys put up units. The only parking requirements they have, maybe for 75 units, three or four handicap spaces.
Goodness.
It's all walking. So they have to do whatever the ADA requirement is for handicap parking.
Okay, can I interrupt you for a second?
Because they're right by Porta Station.
If we're going to go this, I'm with everyone. It's accessible parking. We don't use the word handicap park.
Excuse me.
I'm just going to get us, I was hearing that earlier.
And, you know, we talk about parking and Mark, what Mark spoke, Mr. Gallagher spoke about, was you got to work with it. The numbers I've heard thrown, kicked around for Cambridge alone, in the neighborhood my family lives in now, a parking space is $85,000 to $95,000 to create.
Yeah, to build one space.
To build one space.
So that was a big deal there.
Yeah, that's amazing.
That's not, that's not an on-street space, that's an off-street space.
And that was your morning program?
That's.
That was one of them. So the Community One Stop, which Jonathan referred to, the beauty of this seminar for me, beyond the fact that it was kind of fun, the people that were running these seminars, they're the top people in the state.
That's right.
Jackie Furtado, AICP, Senior Program Manager for the One Stop Program. So this is not some clerk or whatever. This is the actual person who runs the program, who's telling you what to do and how to do it, and here's my telephone number. It's fascinating. Great, great contacts. And the, one exciting part of that program for us was, we were sitting in the second row maybe, right?
That's right.
So the speakers were right, like where Nathan is. And we got to the section which called, is called Expression of Interest. That's an application that was supposed to be done by March 17th.
That's that first phase.
That's that first optional phase.
Expression of Interest for the One Stop.
For the One Stop. And they're looking right at us, and I'm talking to Jonathan, somehow we say we're from Aer, and they said, "Oh, Aer made that deadline."
Right.
So Alan Menoyan, someone in this building, applied under that expression of interest already for this grant program. So that was pretty nice news to hear, right there.
May I build on what you're saying? Is it okay? So that's the beauty of this expression of interest phase, is that you don't have to have all your ducks lined up. That's the whole point. You can just kind of throw, you know, not casually, but you can, you can, you don't have to have all the technical work done. You can get to this expression of interest, then figure out which technical stuff requires investment for the next phase, saving a lot of time and money.
And you talked about affordable needing buy-in. We take a look at where Air Commons started about two years ago, two and a half years ago, a rumor about a possible deal on some land. "Oh my God, the deal's too expensive. Oh my God, oh my God." And where were we at the last town meeting?
Do it.
We voted a nice chunk of change through CPTC for it.
That's right.
So we've shown, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a friendly local project. And they're happening.
And there's another interesting thing. So there's a representative there from Mass Development as part of this One Stop. And I've got her name in the, it'll be, it's in the material right here. This was really a learning experience. When we sit here in this room, and all the boards that we hear in this room, we talk about Mass Development, we typically talk about walking over to Mass Development and talking to the people who run Devens. Well, it turns out there are other managers of property, other managers of programs that are Mass Development, that we have a regional person that we can talk to. And that person is available for a number of different programs, including sidewalks, all kinds of events and stuff that they do. So we don't, we, we're not talking to your Neil Anguses of the world, or the other gentleman over there.
Well, Neil's on Mass Development.
Okay, he's Devens Enterprise.
He's Devens Enterprise.
Okay. So there's my mistake.
That's okay.
So the Mass Development people that we can get a hold of for different projects, maybe different than the Mass Development people that are sitting in Devens, is what I'm getting at.
Exactly.
And that was, I just didn't know that.
Yeah. And what's interesting about Mass Development is it is regional, and each regional office has its own local set. We've got to solve a parking problem for a building that really shouldn't have parking by rights, but it's had parking, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. Let's make it work and get, let's get some housing. So each one's got their own bailiwick.
Right.
And the whole Shirley, Harvard, Aer, Devens thing is beginning to move forward.
Yes, thank you.
So anyway, it's nice to know that we have a community person. We met her, she was right there. It happened to be our district that the woman who was giving the talk was from.
Isn't it interesting that you live in a small town called Aer, and you're in a meeting with people from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they know who you're doing it. They know who you are, and they know what you're doing.
They're doing very good.
They, they do pay attention, so. And as I said, Mass DOT has changed the way they build out roads. They require multimodal paths. They are closing down parking spaces, parking spaces, putting in pedestrian mall.
You want to go over the last one you went to at all?
Um, no, I was going to leave it, because frankly, I can't, I remember two of the three, I can't remember the third at the moment. What was the third one I went to?
I don't think the handouts are available yet. Have you gotten an email from them?
I did, no, no, they sent that.
You sent one.
Okay, I'm waiting for mine.
Because I know I downloaded that, their PowerPoint presentation. I have it somewhere.
Hopefully for the next meeting, I'll get the handouts from the ones that I attended. We'll share them all.
The last one, the last one that Mr. Ashenbo or myself attended was, the title was Zoning Pitfalls and Pratt Falls.
Yeah.
What Not to Do was the title. And interestingly enough, the people giving the discussion were Barbara St. Andrade and also Judy Barrett. Judy Barrett is the consultant we hired to write our zoning.
Right.
Okay. And again, it's pretty obvious that our zoning meets, I wrote down the things that she was highlighting as problems, went back to our zoning and checked them off, that we have it covered.
Yep.
So it's fascinating. What you said before, is we go into these things and we find out that Aer has been very proactive in solving some of these issues and getting them in the right order. There's a lot of tricks to it.
There's a lot of tricks to it. Law changes, use changes, and so zoning bylaws need to remain organic.
Yeah.
We've made huge steps, huge strides.
But she brought out some incredible mistakes that are being made all over the place.
Right. The funniest one, I think, was the definition of accessory apartment.
Yeah.
Where instead of just the definition, they went to all the requirements and minutia. And it was like, a whole page was the definition.
It's intention not to build them.
Exactly. So I want to build on the comments that have been made, and especially reflect, not just on the One Stop, but what Ken just said about how interesting it is that these high-level people have heard of Aer. And this is something I learned from Robert Carroll's book about Robert Moses, called The Power Broker. And one of the reasons that Moses was so successful is he could go to lawmakers, throw down the plans, and say, "We're ready. Just give us the money." And you think, well, what's, that made all the difference, because from the perspective of the politicians at the highest levels, they need to show action, things done. So a small town like Aer can, I apologize. Why does that happen?
Sounds like a fire alarm.
I do not know. The point is, a small town like Aer can win when we're prepared, when we're prepared. And, and just as what we, what you said earlier about, you know, going through the expression of interest phase, about having a parking plan or something there available, that can help us win these grants, even against big, larger towns, because we're ready. And they want to have, "Oh, you're ready? Great." This means I get, you know, a ribbon cutting. You know, I get the photo op. So we just have to keep the stuff in mind. That's it, I'm done.
One thing they did point out on the list of grants is the, and these are the grants that we've been winning all the time. The number one biggest grant that they give out every year is that Mass Works Grant.
Yeah, right.
That's the top of the list, and that's the one.
That's how we did West Main Street.
That's how we did. I'm not sure we did East Main Street that day, but that's what West Main Street is.
That was West Main Street Grant.
And I think even won, I think it won a partial Mac, Mass Works Grant for Park Street already. We're going to be going for another one.
I think Mass, there was a Mass Works Grant to update our GIS system and to mark the streets and do all, do all the stuff. So, yeah.
Stuff was good, anyway.
And it's, it's available funds and it's available expertise.
They want to give it to us. Let's go get it.
Oh, real quickly. So Robert and Carly really liked our plans for the master plan review. We've got the green light. Tomorrow, I think we're going to get ready, Julie and I, to distribute this to department heads. We'll give them a week and a half about, and give us some time to put things together. And then we'll have an opportunity to present to the department heads some of the findings that we have and open that discussion.
I want to go home too, but I want to say one last thing.
I have something I have to say.
Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Oh, is it okay to bring up more things?
Please do.
I know it's late, but we know, do we have any follow-up from what happened at our last board meeting with regards to the Mullins Rule and special permits and the amount of voting?
Yes.
Whether we do, okay. So.
We checked on that when we went to that, that meeting. It turns out every special permit regarding, doesn't matter which board it is, it's a special permit, it's four-fifths for.
It is four, so.
Four-fifths majority, supermajority for special permits and variances. We asked that question, that we can.
Yeah.
So I, have you been able to get any further understanding as to how we're supposed to handle it, from how it got handled last meeting?
Uh, there's a way to get around that, but the town has to adopt it, I think a general bylaw to allow.
Okay.
Towns to do that. And Robert Pumperian is aware of this.
Yep.
And Attorney Gibbons has been trying to get the town to adopt that for a long, for a while.
Is it a regulation?
Maybe this fall, that can happen.
Is it a regulation?
I believe it's a regulation.
If it's a regulation, we can adopt it.
Maybe it's a regulation, I'm not exactly sure, but there is a way to overcome that.
So I met with Robert too. I truly wasn't coming tonight unless we had had the phone calls to say we were all here due to how this was handled last time.
Yeah.
I did end up speaking to Jonathan, so I felt that we were all going to be here. And so I do appreciate Robert is going to be getting this at the fall town meeting, we're hoping, for the Mullins.
I don't, I don't know. I have not.
That's okay, I've met with Robert. So it's something we're working on.
Oh, yes, for the fall town meeting, yes.
For the fall town meeting.
I was, yeah.
But what we had discussed is, with Robert and I, is that if we're in this situation again, I just would like to discuss it as a board when it's us here, where we have a little time, that while I do respect Attorney Gibbons for wanting to have the full board here, and understanding that we don't have that Mullins Rule, which would allow another member to catch up and learn what happened in a meeting at another time, we also can't grant that we can all be here at every time. And that it states that we have to have a quorum, not that we have to have a full board present at every meeting. And so while I, Robert and I at least discussed, I don't know how we feel as a board, it's entirely understandable if it's the first time an applicant is asking for a wait for, till the next meeting, to see if we could have a full board. But that can just continue till we don't even know when. And we're a really good attendance board, right? We all show up as much as possible. But I'm also not going to sit through an hour of a meeting where we talk about all the things we can't talk about until the next meeting. So if we are accepting, I would hope that we could agree tonight, that if we are going to accept an applicant to wait to another meeting to hope for a full board, that we will do that once for an applicant, not multiple times. And I would also ask at that meeting that we, at that point, continue their public hearing, or continue what we're talking about to the next meeting then, and not continue to discuss what we're not going to discuss. Just for the, to be aware of our time and the amount spent. I just don't want to get lost in that conversation like we did at the prior meeting.
And I want to apologize that I got up in the morning, saw the town hall was closed, and just.
I don't want you to apologize, because we all could have very valid reasons, and we're expected to have a quorum, not a full board at every meeting. And I think we do a wonderful job with attendance, and I don't think that pressure should be felt. So I would hope that we at least move the meeting along appropriately.
And I appreciate the phone call I got from one of the members saying, "Are you okay?" Thank you. It really surprised me.
Any further business?
I'd like, yeah, one last thing to say. Many of us participated in the envisioned Aer and Devens 2033.
Oh, yes.
Two-day symposium. Your chairman, Nathan, showed up for the first day, and our Economic Development turned to him and said, "You'll introduce it, won't you?" Jonathan hit it out of the park. If you get a moment to watch the end, no, seriously. Jonathan was turned to and off the cuff, this guy hit it out of the park. So it's worth watching. And I bet you if you asked Jonathan what he said, he'd say to you, "I don't know." But I've never been honestly more proud.
Well, thank you.
That's nice.
Because it sounded to me like, A, he had practiced it, he had written it, he had done it in the mirror, and it was flawless.
He is a professional.
So Jonathan did a phenomenal job of introducing the planning side. I was jealous, and I'm really glad, I'm really, really excited about how, about how well it went. And, and by the way, I rode my bike. I beat the bus to every place.
That's true.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. And I will say, this symposium was wonderful.
Yeah.
And very inspiring. And it's, yeah, this, it's, I'm actually excited about what's ahead, so.
Awesome.
Good.
Can I go? Thank you very much for that. But I had one thing I forgot to mention about Mass Development. This is a learning experience for all of us. One of the programs that they encourage and they support, this regional group, is private development cleanup projects. Hazardous waste removal, stuff like that. So I was, when I heard that, I said, "Wow, this is, haven't, shouldn't we have been talking to these people for a while about the town of Aer? Maybe we have, I'm not sure." But I think it would be worthwhile to bring this representative of Mass Development to one of our meetings to further delineate where they can help us.
You know, it's an interesting question.
And they showed photographs of the projects they cleaned up. I'm talking, some pretty tough stuff.
Well, I was involved in the project on the WRC site up in Redding.
Okay.
Okay? I don't know if Mass Development was involved in that or not, but Mass Development has the ability to bring together big players.
Exactly.
You know? And, and like you said, it takes 15 banks to kick in money to build a large affordable housing project. It's too much risk for a single unit, but Mass Development exists as an opportunity to aggregate these, and they aggregate that. But it's pretty cool. They, the whole thing over on West Main Street, across the street, where Clean Harbors owns that now, and they've got a, I think it's Clean Harbors, isn't it?
The environmental place?
The environmental company that.
It's not Clean Harbors, no.
It's owned by environmental company, but it's a 21E project. It's coming out of